Ready to go.
Ready to go.
I'd like to call the Wolfboro Select Board meeting Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025 to order. We have a need for non-public, Jim?
Mr. Chairman, we do two items: consideration of legal advice and reputation.
Thank you. Consideration of minutes of August 20th. Anybody want to have any... Linda?
Yeah, I have one. It's on page six. It starts on line 261, and I would like it to read, "Mrs. Murray stated that the Select Board only has the ability to discuss matters in at a public meeting, so sometimes it will seem like the Board is talking in circles."
Did you say just that?
Yep.
Anybody else? In a motion or...
Yeah, hang on a second, Dave. Sorry about that. Just an administrative change on line 384, which is on page nine. Attribution to me. Says Mr. O'Brien asks that, Mr. Scott's member, not ask that's. So eliminate the apostrophe yes. And Brenda, if you're out there, which I know you are, thank you for doing these minutes. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Dave, one clarification for line 144. Mr. Thurston, it says again, notes town property is not referenced in the ordinance and could be interpreted at any sidewalk covered. And I believe Linda answered and said that the only sidewalks that the ordinance covers are the ones that are town property.
So just a question, are you asking Linda to verify what she said?
Either be verified or just a note to the public that it was stated as such.
Okay, any other changes? You want to make a motion?
Move to approve the 20 August minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, next. Public input, limited to three minutes per resident, 20 minutes total. Anybody want to talk to us?
I hate to back up, but line 144 is exactly what I said.
No, it is what you said. I said there was a response to it that wasn't recorded.
You know, I think that it, he made the statement, I don't have an issue, I don't feel like...
Sounds logical.
Yeah. I didn't have any issue. I know that I did say it was town property, but as I recall, something up above stated that also. I'm not going to hunt it out now.
Okay. Okay, we all set then?
Yes.
I guess you can probably hear me all right. I can't move that down. I don't want to break it. I don't think so. That wouldn't work for either of us. That's good, thank you.
Move it closer, Paul.
Closer?
No, you got to bite right into it.
Yeah, that's good. I'm sure you can all hear me. Yeah, I'm fine. Oh, I'm terribly nervous. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about the planned September 30th, 2025 closing and eventual raising of the historic community center on Lena Street. My name is Mary Morgan, some of you know me, a 52-year resident of Wolfboro, a senior citizen, and a member of the Ladies of the Lake Quilters Guild. I'm here tonight representing all 100-plus members of our guild, some of whom are here with me this evening. The guild wishes to thank the town of Wolfboro, especially the Parks and Recreation Department, for allowing us to use this warm and homey facility for over 25 years for our weekly quilting workshops. We also wish to thank the Board of Selectmen, who at their November 6, 2013 meeting, accepted our gift of $30,000 to upgrade the community center's electrical system to support our many sewing machines. All blowing effuses ceased from that time on. Every Monday and every other Tuesday evening year-round, except in the summers, you will find 10 to 20 quilters making quilts and pillowcases for each child staying at David's house while receiving treatment at Dartmouth Hitchcock Hospital. We also make quilts for children receiving services at the Child Advocacy Center and placemats that we have distributed through Meals on Wheels. The community center has been a cozy and welcoming place for guild members to make charity quilts together and to have classes on various quilting techniques. The community center space is perfect for children's birthday parties, senior potluck gatherings, and other small group events like classes on Saturdays by Ladies of the Lake Quilters volunteers for local children who want to learn how to sew and quilt. Because the walking distance of the post office and stores where small groups of all ages can enjoy special events... I think I missed something there. In-town location, excuse me. Because... never mind. The building has the quaintness and charm of years gone by, yet remains a homey atmosphere that can't be replaced by a room in a large building regardless of how new or modern. We are here tonight to ask you to reconsider using the money you have set aside to tear the building down and instead invest this money into renovating the community center. The Ladies of the Lake Quilters Guild will gladly work with the Wolfboro community to raise the necessary funds to give this old fire station the small piece of Wolfboro history and new life. Hopefully, in the years ahead, the Wolfboro Community Center will continue to hear the sound of humming sewing machines, children's laughter at birthday parties, seniors enjoying one another over potluck suppers, and be a safe place to entertain many more small community events. Thank you for the opportunity to share our thoughts and concerns with you. And I have coffee for this one.
Thank you.
I didn't get one.
John, do you... you have two?
Do you?
I'm sorry.
Don't give them. So my name is John Thurston, and I'm the Chair of the Community Center Subcommittee. I took on the appointment during the appointments session for the Select Board after it was a quiet session and nobody signed up for it. I knew that the Girl Scouts had done a plan many years ago, five years ago, for the community center. We understand that the community center has been there for over 100 years, and it has accompanied many different organizations and facilities that the facility has given everybody a chance to use. I used it when I was a Boy Scout there during the time. So one of the things that has come about, and I'm going to read you the gazetteer that went back to 2018 about the Wolfboro Community Center, says, "The Wolfboro Community Center is an outdated, one-level wood-framed building that serves as a function and storage area for the town's Parks and Recreation Department as well as some local clubs. The building has an open concept function area with shared kitchen and bathroom services. Main building access is from Lena Street sidewalk with on-street parking. A gravel driveway and additional parking area can be accessed from the rear entrance of the building's northwest. A garage below the main floor serves as additional storage area, given its walkable access to downtown and public recreation sites, as well as newly constructed nearby parking. This lot should be considered for future use by the town public. Comments supports demolition and reuse of this site as a general community center. The 2007 master plan recommends the construction of a joint youth/senior center, a sole recommendation made by the plan for an existing facility still not addressed by the town." The other aspect of this site would be the electric generation building. And I'll just read the last sentence of this. It says, "This lot should be considered for future use by the town public. Comments supports reuse of the structure as a teen center, senior center, or general community center use." And so in the collaboration of the big picture, the seniors are very important to our community. There's been many seniors that have asked us what's going on with the building, and the building is, has over 100 hazardous contaminants in the building. At this time, when we did the master plan facilities, you could go in there and you could smell the mold in the place. When Dave and I went to go to look at the building, we went downstairs and the town public, Parks and Rec gentlemen, said, "Don't go in there for very long. It's not, the air quality is not that good in there. The back deck on the back of the, behind the kitchen is about ready to fall off. The roof doesn't even shed water anymore. There's a piece of steel on the building just, and it's not even accessible to maintain anymore. The walls are peeling off from the outside. If anybody went down that street and hit that building from the front side and you guys were in there, the building, you'd be trapped in the building and wouldn't be able to get out. It's a fire hazard in that respect also." So the committee has come up with a plan to evaluate the building, and I'm going to read the last minutes of the last meeting. Amy Capone Mutio, Christine Collins, Linda Murray, Dave Sennical, and John Thurston met the center to review the report given by Ty and Bond. To determine, we have some questions about the estimates received, but it appears if we remove, remove the portion of the demolished and demolish the community center from those estimates, the actual design cost would be $150,000. So we are putting this in the CIP for future development. Amy reached out to get clarity from Ty and Bond. The discussion of the status of the building included the safety aspect of using the space, and it was decided by that group that I just named off that they should stop using it for senior coffee time and the quilters until further notice as of September 30th, to give the quilters time to find another place that is safe. And that's, that's the whole picture right there. This board will make the final determination on what happens to that building, but at this point in time, what we're really trying to do is we're trying to look into the future. We can, we know back to 2007, the town gave us guidance to move forward on that. We respect your letter and all of you, but this, this building will be a wonderful place for the Parks and Rec on the lower end. It will be an amazing facility for the seniors on the top end. It will be accessible by the street. We still don't know which plan we're going to go with, whether or not we're going to tear both buildings down or reuse the MED building and add to it. So we're doing, we're doing the study right now, so...
Okay, Dave, first of all, this is public input. We should not have any Select Board member answering the public and giving speeches. But now that it's opened, let's keep on going. There is a possibility to not close down the senior center. There are other solutions. Also, I want to see the air quality tests and the mold tests that were done in the building. I would like to see, after I met today with some people who have met with contractors there who say the bones of the building are solid. There's more information out there. Now, as to why the building is being closed, bad procedures. The Select Board made bad procedures again. A group of five individuals met and then said, "We're closing the building." That's not allowed by state RSA. State RSA says the Select Board has to make that determination. The only way that determination can be made other than that is the town manager, if there is an imminent cause for health safety for someone, meaning a burst pipe, a collapsed ceiling, a propane leak, or something to that effect. So I think that some misinformation got out there. I think it spooked the public, and it shouldn't have gotten out the way that it got out. I do know that there are a group of people right now getting together that think that they can raise enough money to keep the building open until we come to a better solution of building a new community center. Again, this looks like a knee-jerk reaction that should have been discussed by the whole board and public first.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to entertain further public comments on this issue?
Just a minute. Mike, Paul.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Thurston and Mr. Duchesne have had an opportunity to speak, but I agree, we're in public input time. So, Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to listen to the public for a few minutes.
Hey, hang on a minute. Linda?
Yeah, I will make my comments when it's appropriate, but I do have some comments that I would like to make also, but I agree, I think we should go on with public input.
Yeah, let's do that.
Mike?
Michael Hutter, Wolfboro. I don't know where Mr. Duchesne has been for the last 10, 15, 20 years or so, but John Thurston, I, Linda, were on the Community Facilities Chapter Committee for the master plan. We went into the building. We know how bad the building is. We smelled the mold. We know that the building needs to be, it's not really safe for people to use inside. I don't think we need to have a diatribe from a Select Board member directed to another Select Board member on an issue of this importance. Thank you.
Well, I think part of what is brought out here is that we have not decided to tear that building down yet. It's part of the reports that we have to do such a thing. And maybe, once we get some designs, we don't know even if the MED building is going to be suitable for the design that our architects and we decide to do. So people should not, well, yes, a lot of us overreact to different things, but the building is shut down because of safety reasons. If our fire chief was here tonight, he could tell you that he has the right to shut the building down, and he will if he, if we need him to intervene in this. So the building right now is not slated for demolition. We do have money to do it if we see that we're going to do that. We as a group have not decided that yet. So for everybody's information, the building is not coming down tomorrow. It is going to be looked at, more than likely with all the information that we have, and also, if you remember, the Girl Scouts did a design for the MED building, did not include an addition, but it did include taking down the community center. That is not on the schedule at this point.
Yeah, I just want to point out, this is a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen, and we decided, based on hearing some of our concerns about the safety in the building, that we go to the town manager and tell him that we thought the building needed to be closed by the 30th, if what we understood was the building was unsafe. And it went to the town manager, and then the town manager will help the board decide when we should address it in public. It was not a decision. That committee has no authority to make the decision to close the facility. I would imagine the town manager will put that on another agenda. We met after the deadline of this agenda, and that we, as a board, will need to look at what the fire chief says, look back at our air quality tests and make a decision. If the building is unsafe, I'll tell you, I will support it being closed because I believe that's my responsibility. If it's not, if it's not unsafe, then I, at this point, do not feel that we have to shut it down. I feel it needed to be shut down because I understood that there was safety concerns. And that was a recommendation, not an action, to close it.
Any more comments? Anybody else want to talk to us because we're going to move on? Next on our agenda?
You got somebody coming up there.
Hang on.
Okay, my name is Carol McMahon, and I do go to the, oh, that's all right. I'm used to standing on my tiptoes. And I do use the community senior center and have for years. I play mahjong there every Tuesday and Thursday. And I did speak last time when Amy was presenting to get $75,000 for this design plan. I spoke at that time too, and she didn't get the money because you said you had, you had to go to the lawyers or something. So this has been, according to my understanding, this change fixing new community center has been dragging on for many, many years. And apparently, we, the town, has plenty of money to build, you know, ice rinks and new docks and all of these other things. And I don't have a boat, and I don't ice ski, ice skate, but the seniors, I lived here for 20 years, I own property, I pay property taxes, and the seniors deserve, the whole community, but the seniors deserve a decent place, something like in Alton. They have a new building. They're open every day. They have lunch. I'd like to be able to have, use that facility more than two hours twice a week, and it could be used by many more people. And we need something that has a kitchen, a full kitchen, and that is safe and accessible for everybody. So I please, I am for the new building, however they design it, one way or the other, on that spot or wherever they decide to put it.
Anybody else want to talk to us right now? Okay, thank you. Next is public.
It seems that there's quite a bit of, and there's a, you would like us to go away with our issues and complaints, but I think the biggest thing that comes to mind for me since I've been hearing about this for a long time, caught me by surprise that suddenly it would close, but as the selectman and a subcommittee of the selectmen, you're full aware that the quilt guild uses it and has for many years on a regular basis, does good work for the community, has donated, should be listened to. The seniors have come up, have begun to have a good program, more and more people come. It's, it's building on itself. We go to other towns and we see lovely facilities, and we wonder why a place like Wolfboro somehow hasn't seen this as an important focus to, to address for the seniors who have long paid taxes, support children. We see playgrounds, we see all sorts of other things being built for them, but there's nothing coming from our Select Board saying, "We value seniors." And I think that it's really important that while you may choose to make a decision that's unpopular for the reason that people are being dumped on the street, it should be part of your responsibility to identify adequate alternate space, since this is a, you know, a large town with lots of facilities, lots of meeting rooms, that can be set aside in the meantime for both the quilters and for the seniors to use on a regular basis. That's not asking so much for a town that has the... The presence and the wherewithal that Wolfboro has. We feel very, very much ignored, and time is of the essence. The virtue of being a senior is that we are old, and things happen, happen to us, things happen to us, and so saying, "Wait for five more years or eight more years," it isn't going to cut it, not at all. We, we need something now, and I think that you could wisely identify alternate places for us to meet so that the impact of this decision would be minimized. That's not so much to ask. Thank you.
I was talking with Christine today from Parks and Rec, and she said that she was looking at ways to find other spaces. I also met with an architect and a citizen in town today that said that by next year, they think they could raise enough money so that by next summer, the community center could be opened as a safe building to use for the next several years until a new community center is built.
I mean, clearly, I mean, when I was a child, I lived in a small town, our church was kind of falling apart, so...
You let him go first.
As a third grader, I offered to start having cookie sales, and we asked our mothers to help us bake, and we got out on, out and we sold cookies to raise money to paint the church. Now, do our, do the seniors and the ladies in the quilting guild need to go out and have cookie sales in order to have a facility that we can use? Thank you.
Excuse me. Yeah, excuse me. Could you just share your name? I didn't, we didn't get your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Judith Morrison. I live in the Birch's, 21 Birch Hill Estates Road.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Bunting. I'm a longtime resident of Wolfboro. I don't come to public meetings, and I hate speaking in public, but I am going to do it tonight. I just want to say, I am grateful of the town of Wolfboro. They have found another place for the Ladies of the Lake Quilters, so we do have a place to go to. We haven't been thrown out on the street, and I'm grateful for that. Secondly, if the building is truly unsafe, then yes, it should be closed. But as Daniel Webster said about Dartmouth College, it's a small college, but there are those of us who love it. Well, ladies of the lake feel that way about the community center. We do not need, in my opinion, a huge building in this town for the seniors. There are so many places to meet. We have the NIC, we have the library now, we have the Town Hall, we have the Abenaki. There are many, many places for people to meet, but there's nothing as quaint as the community center. There's something special about that little building. And if there is a way that we can renovate it, make it bigger, whatever needs to be done, don't make it huge, don't make it extremely expensive, tear down the electric building and make a parking lot, God knows we need parking in Wolfboro, and make the community center quaint, small, usable. And I thank you for helping us all find a place while you're making your decision.
Thank you.
Dave? Linda, you all set for now?
Oh, no, I'm done.
Okay. Paul?
Thank you. And thank you for your comments because your comment and my colleague, student body left here, were in conflict. I think it was a month ago, I asked Christine Collins, "Let's not do anything here until there is a conversation, discussion, and an opportunity," albeit, you know, maybe not the most pleasant thing, "but we need to find a place where the quilters can do their thing, period." period." And I was assured that that happened, and I think Christine's been working on that. So that's good. So she's not in the process of working on it. I think she found something for you. Just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. I was not part of this team that's going on, but I'm feeling that, from the time that I was on the select board, and then I took a little holiday and came back, this community center has had the attention of the select board, the master plan, Mike Hodder reminded us of that. And I'm not here to do the document thing, but let me do the document thing. Back in 2023, September 21st, to be specific, the town spent, you know, half of it was spent by the municipal electric department, because we had to take some of the money out of their budget, and half of it got spent by you, the taxpayer. Actually, you spent both of it, because you pay your electric bill. About $35,000 was allocated to look at the PCBs. Those are nasty things, polychlorinated salts, asbestos, fibrous, homage mold, and all that nasty stuff that we really don't like talking about. And they came back with a report, and I'm not going to debate the data, but here it is. Mercury-containing equipment, et cetera. The question I would ask myself is, if I were running a small business or if I had my grandchild, would I put him in there in the winter time, turn the heat on, and leave him in there for a couple hours? The answer would be, no. I wouldn't do it. Now, we can have a conversation, and we're gonna, as to how we got here, because we do want to look backwards and before we can look forward. We'll have that conversation as to why we got here, and we'll use all kinds of words. What I see is that, and I'll name names. Amy had the, it was the Girl Scouts, right?
Yes, it was the Girl Scouts.
It was the Girl Scouts, an architect, to try to paint some pictures for the town as to what a community center could look like. Not a, and by the way, I don't think we need the Comcast Center. You know, I don't think we need to have, you know, NBA basketball. We need to have a community center that reminds us that the person who the street is named after was the firefighter that was in that building. You know, that we can remember that kind of stuff. The question before us is, and it's a sad question, but is this thing fit for occupation? That's the first question on hand. And I'm not going to debate data. I'm not an environmental scientist. I'm not going to do it. I wouldn't put my kid in it. So that's kind of where I see things going. And I'll just make my comment. Now, I don't know whether we're done with public input?
Yeah.
We're done with public input? 6:30. All right, so I'm sorry. That was my wrap-up.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a public hearing. Ordinance change. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a second of two public hearings on Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, 6:30 at the Great Hall, 84 and South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire. Guide amendments to the Town of Wolfboro ordinance, Chapter 140, Article 3, sidewalk obstruction.
Do you want me to do something? Okay, we started, there was a sidewalk ad hoc committee, and they made some recommendations for the changes. We've held one public hearing, but here are where the changes took place. In 140-13, we made the minimum standard walking width for ADA 50 inches. We also have that a flag or something coming off the building cannot be lower than 80 vertical feet, and I think that's building code.
Right.
We came down to objects. Again, we talked about the minimum standard walking width of 50 inches. Then we went on and looked at the section about signs. And what we did is we referenced the zoning ordinance, 175-44G1, which has all the regulations for signs, so we didn't put them in here again. And then on the back, we have enforcement, and it can be the police department, code enforcement officer, the town manager, and then we added, "Or the town managers designate me." And those were the changes that we made to the ordinance. The reason we made those changes was the concern of objects being put on the sidewalk. We did a survey, and we asked the public to answer it. And the one thing that came out was, people wanted to be able to walk down their sidewalks. And that's why we moved it to 50 inches.
Dave, Linda, the survey also was open to the business community and to the general public. So we got the survey from both groups of people, and the preponderance of evidence said that both the business owners and the general public wanted to have the walkable area on the sidewalks. The business owners thought that that would be beneficial to their businesses, too.
For the public benefit, how many people, for the public benefit, how many people participated in the survey?
30, 35. I don't think it was much more than that.
Yeah, I think it was 12.
No, it was not 12.
Okay, 35?
I'm guessing. I didn't bring my file tonight. If I had known you were going to ask that question, I would have brought my file.
I wouldn't have asked it if it hadn't been brought up.
I would have answered it for you, because it would have been in my file. I also will state that the chamber did inform their business community that this public session was going to happen tonight. And so the business community knew that this was going to take place, because that was a question you asked.
Yeah.
And so I text Mary DeVries to make sure that something would go out to the business community, and it did.
Just a question, Linda. Mary sent something out on social media asking folks to get to you. Did you get any contemporaneous input from them?
I did not.
Interesting.
I did not. So people did know that it was coming, and it was the second one. These changes, some of the changes were made after we held a public hearing about a year ago, and there was concern. So we went back, because we listened to the public, and got rid of having the businesses have to have a permit and be charged $50. They did not feel that that was in their best interest, just as the summer season is. So we listened to that and took that out.
Okay, does somebody want to, is there any public input in reference to this tonight? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Wood? Somebody want to make a motion?
I just want to make a... Can you guys hear me out there? No? Mics are off.
No, mine's not off.
There we go. Better? Yeah? Okay, sorry. You don't want to hear me. I got it. I have no objection to the 50 inches. I think people want to be able to comfortably walk back and forth in the crosswalk. And I have no problem with that. And I have no problem with making sure that a flag isn't flying in your face when you walk by. That's kind of nasty to do. The question that I asked earlier, and Linda, I don't think I got the answer, and if you could help me with it, is there any business that, by virtue of this updating of the 50 inches, automatically becomes nonconforming? Do you guys know of any business that would be nonconforming?
You asked that before, and is there a sidewalk where there are some buildings that come right up to the sidewalk?
Yeah.
And if they put out an A-frame sign?
They'd become nonconforming.
They'd become nonconforming. But when they put that A-frame sign out there, people can't walk on the sidewalk.
No, I got it.
And I think some of us know of where those places are. So what we focused on was having a reasonable space for people, ADA requirement, somebody who's handicapped, and regular citizens can walk down our sidewalks. And I've got to say that the business community has done an outstanding job of getting their tables and chairs back away. We haven't, the last thing we seem to have issues with are A-frame signs.
So, okay, just so that I'm, and thank you for that, because I think I see the same thing. So there is no business that is going to get a knock on the door that says, "We just passed an ordinance, and you're nonconforming" because of this permanent structure that you may have in front of your building. If you have an A-frame inside of your building, and you're inside that 50, we're going to knock on your door and say, "It's got to get moved."
Well, if we have, the town property line goes to a certain point, and the building's there, and that business puts some permanent thing on our sidewalk without our permission, we're going to ask them to take it off.
No, I understand that part.
Though I don't understand your question.
But nobody's done that already. So there's nobody who is per se in violation because of a permanent structure?
No. There's nothing that we know, that we found as a committee that was in the way.
So Linda, and I'm not trying to do this to be altruistic. I think you made a comment, and I believe this. I think the business people, I trust that they're going to do the right thing. The fact that we may not have gotten a lot of public input is highly suggestive that the business community is saying, "I'm okay with this." And I talked to a couple of people down there, and they all kind of agree that it's nice to have people walking back and forth. For us to enforce this means we have to anticipate some cost. Either we just take it out of our hide and ask the code enforcement, or Jim Pino, or the police department to just do more work and not budget for it. I guess my question would be, do we trust the community? That's a bad way to put the question. I'd like to suggest that we adopt this ordinance change and give it one full calendar year. Like, next year at this time, we bring it up back on the calendar and we say, "How did they do?" And if we find that we have people who've been not necessarily playing by the rules, then we say, "Okay, it's time to enforce it."
Well, I think I'm under the understanding that any ordinance can be revisited and changed at any time if there's an issue with it. So I don't understand why we have to put a 365-day piece on it.
I'm saying you adopt the ordinance, and you wait 365 to enforce it.
And if you're concerned about the expense, there's a penalty involved in it that would offset the cost of someone going down when there is a violation. So I don't see an issue with that.
Yeah, you know, it's kind of like a parking ordinance. One of the people here is the police department. They're walking around, they're checking the parking, and they walk into an A-frame sign on the sidewalk. They address it. You know, I really believe that the majority of the businesses have no issue with it. They're not here. When they did have an issue, they came in. I think the public wants the walkable space.
I'm with you.
And I don't think that there is a, you know, maybe we have to put a price tag on downtown patrolling. But I think that is part of the police department. And the other people are there. If for some reason a complaint comes in, and we can send the code officer down if the police aren't around. You know, I feel comfortable between the town manager and the police department. They can work out something that addresses this ordinance, and if we have an issue, to find the person.
And it's also for new businesses coming in, because we've had new restaurants at the town docks. We had the Pretzel Company that came in just recently. So ownership changes on different restaurants, it's good to have it in paper so that new people come in and they understand what's expected on the sidewalks in front of them. Makes it easier for them.
This is our second public hearing. So we had the first one, which we get a lot of information from. So somebody want to make a motion to approve this?
I will make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the changes to the Town Sidewalk Ordinance, 140-13 through 140-22.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? What, a bit? All of them favor?
Aye.
Okay. Wolfboro Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, 6:30 p.m. to consider amending a temporary event permit application approved on February 5th, 2025, for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to host the Sasquatch Footy Regatta on September 10th, 2025, previously approved for June 14th, 2025, but canceled due to weather. From 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at 95 Glendon Street, Glendon Street Parking Lot and Bridge Falls Path, permit 202512. Is anybody here from the Boat Museum? Okay. I'll close the public hearing.
Aside from just the date change, everything else is the same. Move to approve the change of date to September 10th as the replacement for the Sasquatch Footy Regatta?
Second.
9 to 4.
All those in favor? Okay. Bulk Vote is next, which is our weekly manifest. Intent to cut. There's only two this week. Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Bulk Vote, A through B.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Economic Development Committee resignation of Kathy Famon and an appointment, but we're going to table this. The reason is, the person that wanted to get an appointment withdrew her name, so we're going to table it to another time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just personally, and I hope the board is with me, that Kathy leaving the Economic Development Committee is... That's something that's going to get missed. I mean, she's not bashful, and she's not shy on stepping up to the microphone and telling us when we have a stain on our T-shirt. And I think we owe her a debt of gratitude for the service that she's given to that committee.
Yeah, I will go along with that. And Kathy was the chairman when the EDC did the business expansion and retention survey and provided the EDC with outstanding leadership.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to new business discussion, assessing 2025 revale update.
So the revaluation is quickly approaching completion. Should be receiving in the mail, if you haven't already, the revaluation which is taking place. And Todd Haywood is here to be able to speak on behalf of the project and potentially be able to answer any questions the board may have. I did provide you with a backup information that Todd provided me just prior to the meeting, so you have that data in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Todd Haywood. I'm the principal in Granite Hill Municipal Services. And I have my associate Angela Silva here. Angie did most of the heavy lifting so far, so I want to give her credit for where credit's due. But pretty much, I just want to make it clear that these notices are preliminary assessments, so they're subject to change. But we're looking to have hearings the week of the 15th, so in two weeks. And so there could be changes as a result of that. But as we stand right now, I can go over some statistics for you and hopefully answer any questions. The preliminary results, and I stress preliminary, median ratio of 261 sales that were benchmarks that we use to recalibrate the existing computer-assisted mass appraisal model is 97.4% assessment to selling price, with a coefficient of dispersion of 8.1%. So they're pretty close. The price-related differential, which tells us where the bias is, is slightly above 1, but within the acceptable range. And that's pretty normal with the array of styles of property you have and values of property you have. And then what I gave you, that I pulled tonight, and I don't know how far you want to get into it, but this is just, mass appraisal is not like a fee appraisal where you have three comps for every property. You use the 260 or so to value the other 5,700. So it's a little... So it's a little bit different, and the computer's a good tool, but we test it through statistics. And what I gave you is the results as it stands now. And I don't know how much time you want me to spend on that or what, but, you know, the first the first one after the cover page is, it just says waterfront and other, so you had 22 waterfront sales and 239 non-waterfront sales. 239 are at 97.6% and the waterfront at 96.1%, so they're pretty close. And then the next page, it stratifies by land use, so it's a little bit more detailed. And those are all pretty good. There's one that's a little high, but there were only three sales, so I'm not that worried about those, but the others are all are all around the 90, 95% mark. Even the, there were 17 commercial properties, which we see less of, and they're at 96.5%. So it seems to be performing pretty well. The next page, briefly, that just tests how we do our land curve, you know, by the size of a lot, and you can see how those statistics panned out. The next one is kind of important because there's multiple different economic neighborhoods, and we call it by zone. It's not zoning zone, it's economic neighborhood zone. But this separates the various areas of town separately, and those seem to be seem to be performing pretty well, too. Then you have your distribution of sales ratios, which you probably don't, doesn't really matter that much to you, but it's a normal distribution. It's supposed to look like a bell curve, and it does, where most of them fall around that 100 mark. And then the next is just year of construction, so that's how we test the depreciation schedule on the buildings, which also seems to be working pretty well. And just to be, you know, just to reiterate, this is using the same 261 sales, just separated differently, so. And then it gives you the building effective area, so the building size adjustments, which that's, the bigger the house, the less it costs per square foot. It's just one of those things, because of fixed costs. And that's, I mean, in a nutshell, that's what I have. We did we did have an insert, if you've received your notice, you saw the insert, that kind of explains how the change in assessment might affect the taxes. Not exact, but an illustration. And there's other, that's on the website, and there's other other notes on the website as well, if people are interested. The assessments, the new assessments are also on the website, and so if you want to look at yours or your neighbor's or anything like that. And we are open for appointments Monday, the 15th through Friday that week of September.
Go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, my understanding, your appointment's by phone, and you'll also do a Zoom video?
I wasn't gonna do Zoom, but we can definitely do by phone.
By phone?
Yeah.
So if you're out, if somebody's watching and who's gone back from the summer, they can get ahold of you, and you will schedule a time for them to talk?
Yes, yes.
Would you explain to, because I had a call today, when your assessment goes up, what happens to the tax rate?
The tax rate should go down. I mean, I can't speak to the budget, but, you know, you went up, the town in aggregate, some total went up 93% as of now. So you would expect the you would expect the tax rate to react accordingly.
And so the town only will raise the amount of money it needs for 2025, which will set the budget? So there, it is controlled.
What she said.
So I often find myself explaining that the municipalities are in the business to break even. If you appropriate $10 million, you have to raise $10 million. You can't raise eight, you can't raise 12. It's just the way it is, so that all happens at town meeting and school meeting. Well, almost all of it.
Dave, I did a little research, and now it's going to, people always want to compare our taxes in Wolfboro to other towns. And when we were at a 55% valuation based on market sales, it was difficult. I did a little research and found out right now, Alton is at, well, as of 2024, Alton was at 97.4%, Guilford 93.5%, Gilmington was low with us at 59%, Laconia was at 99.1% Meredith at 99%, Sandbridge in 92%, so on and so forth, Center Harbor. So we're now in the same area as the rest of the town. So now our tax rate is, if you, if people are concerned about comparing how our taxes are to other towns, now you'll be able to see a better picture of where Wolfboro sits compared to the towns in the Lakes Region area.
John?
So Todd, I got the ratios for my properties today also, and I thought the sheet where you showed the new price of the property and the tax rate compared to the old price with the tax rate, I thought it was really important to see that paper. So all those people out there, when you look at your valuations, find that piece of paper so that you can get the full understanding. It's, I mean, mine was within $100, so.
And the reason why we do that is because oftentimes people will apply the new assessment to the old tax rate, and they'll panic.
That's why I asked the question.
That's why Linda got the phone call.
Yes, that's right, exactly.
And it was from me.
Yeah, right.
The ratio is how the state will equalize your assessment, so everyone's paying the same. So they, you, for example, you were at $2,676 million rounded before at 55%. Well, divide that by 0.55, and it's probably gonna put you in around the $5 billion mark. So that's, so you're just up to $5,175 million now at this point. I mean, that's, like I said, that's subject to change. Probably not gonna change that much.
So how do municipal town-owned properties, do they get evaluated also?
Same, same as the commercial properties.
Any other questions for Todd right now? I'm sure he's gonna have some in the next few weeks.
I am sure he is, too.
You sure you don't want to do Zoom meetings, Todd? Todd, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Todd.
All right, thank you.
Nice job.
All right, next on our agenda, discussion of actual versus budget. Sam?
My name is Sam Kelly, Finance Director, and I'm here to go over the July financials.
Could you pull the mic to you a little bit more? Thank you.
Is that better? So through July, we were 58% or seven months through the budget year. As of that time, the general fund was roughly 61% expended of their 2025 budget. Water Fund was 67%. Municipal Electric Fund, 62%. Sewer Fund, 72%. And Pop Whalen, 92%. On the revenue side of things, General Fund had received 49% of their expected revenue. Water Fund at 69%. Electric Fund at 58%. Sewer Fund at 53, as well as Pop Whalen, also at 53. Over the last month, the finance office has put out two RFPs. They're currently posted, one being the Managed IT Services bid, which is due September 18, the other being Audit Services, which that bid is due September 23. I'm currently working on putting together a third RFP for the town's copier machines as that contract expires December 31 of this year. So that will be coming out in the next few weeks with probably an October due date. We've also been busy preparing for the 2026 budget. Department head budgets were due to the town manager on August 22, and the town manager and I will be meeting with department heads over the next week or two to start reviewing their individual department budgets. Any questions?
Question, Linda?
Yeah, there's one budget that I'm really concerned about is the legal services, and I am wondering whether, and this is probably with Jim, whether there's a way for us to look at it and decide whether there's some ways that we can hold that expense down. Our town planner is here, so I'm hoping that the use of legal services may be able to be reined in.
I would agree with you, Linda, that hopefully with the new planner on board, some of the expenses associated with the legal budget will be under control. It's, right now, it's monitoring. Obviously, we've encumbered all of it. I do think this past month, we have seen, past couple months, it has stabilized, but we will continue to watch it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with Linda, but my my advice to all of us here is, let's, and by the way, I'd much rather spend money on more help for the planner administratively and less help from a lawyer, no disrespect to lawyers, but I think that, you know, Bill is, Bill is probably up to his elbows in just trying to find how to get things done. So I'd say next month, we should see a, we should see a change, a delta in that, and if we don't, then we may want to ask Bill to help us understand why. But right now, he's pretty dang busy, just trying to dig out of what he had to dig into. It's not an excuse, it's just let's not paint a picture where everything's gonna be good and when we need to wait. Thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Samantha. We had our our bi-weekly call, and I had three questions, and the questions were legal tech and debt services, and she answered them in an astute manner, and I was very happy with the answers.
Any other questions for Sam?
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks.
Okay, next is Pop Whalen Financial Reports.
Explain that.
Brian Paul, Operation Director at Pop Whalen. We, in the past month, we did open on August 11 with ICE. It has been very successful. For the month of August, we did over $10,000 in revenue with ICE sales, public stick time, public skating, concession sales that went on. A little over 5,000 of it is still outstanding in accounts receivable, but it has been signed and sealed and delivered. This coming month in September, we've already got over $12,000 in ICE sales, and that doesn't count anything for public stick or public skating or concessions. Unfortunately, the downfall was, we did have to spend a good amount of money to get the compressor going, but it was required. It was about, it ended up costing us about $90,000.
Can you say that again?
Unfortunately, it was $90,000.
No, no, this is a reaction from the audience.
Yes.
How do you spell that? How do you spell "oop"?
Unfortunately, without it, the building would have never opened at all this year, so it wouldn't matter if we opened for ICE in August or if we opened it in October. That money was gonna have to be spent for us to open. I will say that with the compressors now rebuilt, we have the best ice, from my understanding, that this building has ever had.
I hope so.
Just to give an idea, last year, we couldn't get the ice temperature below 21 degrees. Right now, we're running about 17 degrees, so it's gonna actually help in the, in saving money on energy costs, which right now, year-to-date, if I add the propane and electric together, we're saved about $3,000 over last year. The summer months were great for Pop Whalen this year. The year before, they only did about $400 worth of sales. This year, we did almost $3,000 worth of revenue, thanks to a couple flea market, community craft fair, pickleball, basketball, street hockey, everything that we had going on at the arena. And next year, we expect even more excitement. That's about all I got for you.
Brian, you also were able to get the state to install a sign for you, is that correct?
Oh, yes. So as requested, we did get the state, and they put the sign up a week ago. It's just before the Wright Museum on the right-hand side, and I did include pictures for you guys to see it, that we do have the Pop Whalen State Sign. It is set by, the size is set by the speed limit of the area, so that's why it is the size it is.
I think the guy forgot to get him a package.
Yeah, I'll forward you the electronic copy.
Here's the sign.
Beautiful.
Oh, beautiful.
So.
Three things in a town that are the most expensive to operate, a pool, a ski mountain, and an ice skating rink. We have two of them in the same place, so it is a battle to do what you do, and I appreciate the fight that you're fighting for the town.
Yes, I was lucky, I have a grandson who loves stick practice, and I got a chance to go over and see the facility with the ice in and the people enjoying, the kids enjoying it. I think that's been a plus, that we did put the ice in early, because the amount of money we make when the ice is in is drastically larger than when it isn't. My understanding, it has to have the ice out for at least two months, is it?
It's approximately one week for every month that we're open. Obviously, I like it to be a little bit longer, just to make sure that we're not having any problems with frost heaves and stuff like that, that could possibly crack that cement, because that would be a detrimental disaster.
That would be more than $90,000.
It would be.
You have more than an oops on that one.
Right. So the plan for this year is, the last weekend in March, we will be closed. That'll be our ice out with our famous Paint the Ice event that went over very well last year. And exactly two weeks after that, we do have the Wedding Expo already planned, and they actually just finished signing the agreement and already prepaid for the for the place. So that's already done and sealed. And then we will plan on August 10 of 2026 to reopen again. I have the same camp that was here this year, planning on doing it again, and I have two other camps now that they know that we will open, that are already planning on signing contracts with us to bring more stuff in.
Good.
Any other questions, Brian? John?
So for the people out there, this gentleman that is sitting at the, standing at the podium right here is a tremendous asset to our community. We couldn't do it without him. He's very intelligent, he knows the business, and we thank you. I thank you. Great job.
I do have one other thing to just mention, so the general public knows about it. One thing that I did do, and used to do in other rinks, and I'm bringing it to this arena, is our first responder stick time. So any first responder, veteran, active military can come at stick time on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings from 7:30 to 8:50 in the morning. We do not charge them. We ask for donations. The idea is twofold, one, to thank them, but two, to also maybe create a Battle of the Badge event.
Battle of the Badges.
Later on, if we can get enough people. Also, part of this is, on September 11, which is a week from Thursday, we will be offering free complimentary coffee to anybody who attends that as a thank you and for 9/11.
Any other questions, Mr. Brian?
Mr. Senical, I want to thank you for your, you put together a, an income statement. It's kind of nice. I'm not gonna comment on it, because I want to go, you know, just understand it better, but for the benefit of those out there with this, I can say he's a young man, because I'm a senior citizen. What this young man has done is he's detailed the amount of revenue we get by line item, by month. So if you wanted to know, how much advertising dollars did we get by month, you can do that. He also then did the same thing of lining the expenses up by line item, by month. You know, it's kind of the way you do your home budget, but he's doing it for this You know, it's kind of the way you do your home budget, but he's doing it for this little rink that we got. His $90,000, I'd call that a bad guy, just, you know, that shot the lights out of your budget, so you have to go sell more stuff.
That's what we're doing.
Just not, you know, you just can't admire how bad it was, you're going to go sell more stuff. But the observation here, just for the folks, is we worried, and I don't mean fretfully worried, but we worried that the summer months, that rink needs to get utilized. And you can see it in the data, that we need to get more utilization. So if you have friends who want to visit the rink during the summer when there's no ice, and take advantage of things, you know, get in touch with Brian, because if we can fill up the summer months, those June, July, August months in there, and get some dollars in the door, this is a big help on the entire facility. Because, think about it, the costs are fixed. They don't go away in the summer months. We can't just simply say, you know, costs go away, they have, we have to cover those costs. So that would be good. I thank you for doing this, and I appreciate all you do.
And just so you know, the summer months this year was $29 a day.
There you go.
Was the revenue.
$29 a day. We need like $2,900 a day, right? But that's great, but thank you, Brian.
Okay, next on our agenda, food truck policy. 390 Pine Hill Road, Pop Whalen.
So several months back, Brian and Christine came in front of you to discuss food trucks. One of the conversations that we had as a takeaway was the establishment of a policy. For such, Brian, Christine drafted a policy, which we have in front of you for review and consideration. Brian will be able to answer any questions you have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? It's pretty straightforward, as far as I can see. Linda?
Yeah, I'm assuming this is a year-round policy?
Yes.
Okay, so then I would like to have a map of where we're see six trucks be parked, because it's very hard for me. We know we've got a parking issue up there, and I would like to see that before I'm willing to vote in this procedure.
So last time I was here, I did provide you a map, and then your discussion to me was that depending on the season, depends on where the food trucks were going to be, will be placed, and that it was at our discretion based on what the event is. So for instance, if it's a ski event, obviously, we're not going to put them in front of all the ski area, they were, Pop won't be slower, we put them in front of Pop, like we did the Food Truck Fridays this past summer. So we put them near Abenaki to keep the large parking lot open. So it was based on what the season is and what events are going on there. So really, it's almost, I hate to say, an open map based on what events and what's going on in the building.
As I recall, those all came to us as temporary events.
Because this was before, before this event, this came along.
That's right. You're asking for me something new here. So I know you gave me a temporary event, and then I would see where they were going for that event. So we would see that. My concern is in the winter months.
Yeah.
On those being there. And so I still feel here where you would put six in the winter months, and that we have that as part of this policy. I just can't.
I'm cool with that.
We will come back to you at the next meeting with a map.
I think with that map, it might have to be a little bit flexible, because it also will depend on the snow, right? How much snow we get. So it could be altered a little bit, but that's why we weren't so concrete where it was, because depending on the season, how much snow we had, and what he's saying is, depending on the vent and how much traffic we have, would either deter if we could have up to six or not. But we can put an estimate of where they would go, and then we would use our best judgment for snow.
Yeah, and my concern is that when we have events up there, when we're having skiing and when we're having the ice open, there are not places for six food trucks. And so you're asking me to give permission for that? And so I want some kind of a map, and maybe there is the, you're not going to have them there when both facilities? I need more than what's here, that's what I'm saying.
I think that is absolutely going to be the case. In the winter months, I don't think we will have the capability to do that, because we'll have food trucks, and we won't have any place for people to park. So I think it would be us being smart about that. We are well aware, I think it's not just the food truck where it's, like, it is where it's parked, but like for Food Truck Fridays, we actually, like he said, we blocked off a whole section with cones, so people, it was a standing area with the food trucks for safety, because one of the things is, when they're waiting in line, when they grab their food. And also, I think they do need a flat surface for most of those food trucks.
And that would be part of the map.
Yeah, okay.
So number five, I'm wondering if this is a townwide policy outlook here. All food trucks must be at least 15 feet away from any building. Was that approved by the fire department?
So I talked to Chief Zadi about it. He recommended 15 feet. I know the state law says 10 from the building. We'd rather be safe than sorry, especially with, you know, new buildings up there. Why take a chance of anything possibly going wrong?
Yeah, I was actually, actually thinking that might be 20 would be better.
Yeah, so the state law says 10. And, but I, you know, we decided that 15 was probably better. If it ends up being 12, we're still within the state guidelines, but, you know, so that's where the 15 came from, the 10 feet, apart from any between them and between any vehicle, that is state, that is state law, that has to be 10 feet in between, you can't have them on top of each other. And then there's other factors where, you know, generators have to be so many feet away from the thing, and that's all part of their process of getting permitted by the town. They're supposed to go to eat. In New Hampshire, there is no statewide inspection for food trucks, they have to get inspected by each town. And that's why I did send this to the fire department for their approval. They did add, asked me to add in one little part to it, which I did, which was that they need to show proof of the fire inspection to us from, that they had gotten it from the town of Wolfboro.
So is there any fee structure at private events or anything?
So this here, why we brought this to you is, so if we do have any private events that are having food trucks, that we can, we will charge for food truck, because it's taken away from our concessions and stuff like that. My vision of this is, we will have very few, except for maybe ski races, stuff like that, that we will have very few food trucks there in the winter months. This will be more during our community craft fair, any flea markets, if we're going to continue doing Food Truck Fridays, which seem to be very popular. This is where this policy really is going to come in effect. At the most, we usually maybe have one, maybe two at the most during the wintertime, and that's very rare.
Do we provide electricity or anything to these food trucks?
If they request it. So far, all the ones we've had have not. I shouldn't say that. There was one from the flea market that did request it, but they were charged as part of the fee of being there.
So when we had the food trucks down at Lake Winnie Day the last couple of years, I went to the state fire marshal and got a copy of the fact sheet that you have, that gives you all the specifications. I forwarded it to Brian, so that he would have a copy of it also. You will be the lead for the food trucks at the whole complex?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted that to be clear, because Christine and Bo and you all work in that same place, but you will be the lead for all of that. And I trust you, as these two gentlemen said, intelligent, doing a great job. I assume that you will do the right thing with food trucks. You're not going to put six food trucks there when we're having a ski race and a hockey tournament. So I'm leaving it in your capable hands.
Okay, so we're going to table this until Jim, we get the map?
We'll have a map for you for the next meeting.
Okay.
Great job.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Next, Abenaki rate increase proposal.
Uh-oh, updated information. Uh-oh, updated information. Uh-oh.
Yep. Good evening. Bo Betts, Assistant Director, Wolfboro Parks and Rec. I'm here tonight to discuss with you proposed rate changes at Abenaki Ski Area. Those rate changes include day passes, season passes, rentals, and also the rental of the building, that's in your packet as well. So just a couple of things we want to review. We were tasked at the beginning of the year to review all of our rates for programs, everything in parks and recreation. We thought it was the right time to look at the Abenaki rates. I just want to say, I do understand the importance of Abenaki to the community. So I'm not here, and I don't want to, you know, have any drastic increases, but I do think it is time that we look at the rates and we make some minor increases on these. If you'll look at the season passes, there was really no mathematical, scientific way of looking at this for me. I just kind of looked at the rates, and I made the adjustments based off of where I thought they should be. You know, I went up $25 on each of the youth adult season in family passes. The family passes, just for your information, you can have up to six family members under that one pass. And then day passes, as you can see, minor increases. Another note with the grant that we have at Abenaki, we can't, our resident and non-resident pricing can't be any more than half. So if it's a $10 resident, it can't be any more than $20 for non-residents. And then I just have the rentals that we collaborate with Ski Works and Ossipee, the increases there, and as well as the private race rentals and private rentals for the hill as well.
Dave? The only thing that I did was, I took King Pine and I X-ed it right off as a prompt.
I, just one last thing, I'm sorry. The town manager had reached out to me Friday, I believe it was, to get some more comps for other mountains. I was able to find the information that I just passed on to you for Cochran's out of Vermont. The other two that I looked at, Powderhouse Mill, I think, and Stores as well, they did not have any updated information on their website. I have an email out to both facilities, but I have not heard back from them.
The only other one that you might want to look at, and I'm not going to tell you how to do your business, is it's called Arrowhead, and only because it's owned by Claremont. The town of Claremont, or city of Claremont owns it, so there, I only picked up one quick number, and they're $12 for a resident skier, and that falls right in line with where you are with these others.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for doing this. I need some more, just, and if you don't have it, well, you can give it to me later. So am I, this is, this says to me that it costs us, in staff, tax, electric, and gas, $2,100 bucks a day to run that hill?
Yes.
And that's including the shed?
The what?
The...
The motor house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all in, $2,100 bucks. How many days of the year are we open?
We were open 75 days this past year.
So the math would be $2,161.56, roughly speaking, times 75 days? Okay, so, and where does that show up as revenue? Is that the 34.8? No?
No.
35?
The 34.8 is the revenue we brought in for season pass sales.
Here's what I'm trying to get to, so that we don't, I don't play 20 questions with it, because I don't want to do that to you. I'm just trying to understand, what's your margin, how much revenue are you generating, what's your cost, what's the delta between the two?
Okay.
And what's the problem you're trying to solve for? Do you have that off the top of your head?
I don't.
Okay, well, let's do it together, maybe we can do it in a couple of minutes.
So the operating budget proposed right now for 2026 is $150,000.
All right. The first thing I have to do is find a calculator on my phone, which is always a challenge. All right, so 75 times 2,200 bucks.
1,000...
1,650.
Yeah.
Well, it's more than that, it's, yeah, 1,6,500 dollars.
No, it's 163,990. So 163,996 dollars is what he said was what it cost for 76 days of operation.
76, 163 grand, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give or take.
And you're taking in how much revenue?
Um, let me, so you can see that this year, in season passes, we brought in 34.8. Day pass revenue this year was $35,000. Looking at ski rentals, which we split with Ski Works, we brought in...
But roughly speaking, how much revenue are you bringing in? If you're not bringing in at least 162,000, we're in the hole.
No, it's about 100, just about 100,000. I don't have an exact number.
It's about 100 grand you're bringing in?
Yeah, I would say that's...
So you're in the hole, 62,000 bucks?
Pretty close, yeah.
So roughly speaking, you got to make up 62 grand in rates, or you got to cut costs.
This is not an enterprise fund.
I'm sorry?
This is not an enterprise fund.
No, I understand, but we're trying to make sure that revenues and costs match each other.
No, we don't.
Then that would be an enterprise fund.
That's a bad idea?
No, because sometimes we provide services, and I think this town has spent time and had decided that it was better to put money into recreational programs for kids than to pay for police officers. And so we provide services, and all services don't break even.
No, I got, okay, so let's do it that way. I'm trying, let's do it that way. I stand, I'll stand somewhat corrected on this. So you generate 162,000 in cost. That's like a real number, because gas and electric and staffing, that's a fixed cost.
So that number, I mean, a day, is hard to say, because there's days where we're open for three hours, and on the weekends, we're open for extended hours.
Let's just run it down to 150,000, so I don't have to take my shoes off. And Linda makes a good point, that we're providing a service. So how much revenue are you bringing in? You think you're bringing in 100? Okay, so the difference between 100 and 150, how much of that do we want to say is service-worthy? 25,000? 50,000?
But also, what's not in here that's in your enterprise fund, there's no cost for all the administrative stuff. So we're not...
The administrative allocation, which is part of, which is not part of Abenaki, that's part of an enterprise fund.
That's right. So we're, it doesn't really, to me, I don't understand the mathematical calculation when we don't have all the figures, and I don't think that you can put a dollar amount on all the services that we provide.
I'll tell you where I'm kind of getting to, and then I'll be quiet. I'm kind of getting to the point, is if we say that we generate about 150, 160,000 in cost, and if we say that the offset to that, you know, in my feeble mind, is about 100,000 in revenue, and if we say that, you know, let's just make it up, the 50,000 is something that we're throwing in into the kitty, you know, because it's a service, then we don't have to raise prices.
Well, I would, no, 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 because if expenses are going up, let's say 3%, then we move our rates, 3% to cover that cost, so that we don't keep on making the taxpayer make more and more. And that, I think, is what we're trying to catch up from.
Trying to close the gap.
We're trying to kind of close that gap.
Well, I go to the senior lunch. The senior lunch, we charge $3 to $5, and it's a donation only for the senior lunch. Where can you eat a three-course meal with drinks in town for $3.75? It doesn't happen. So could, should we charge the seniors $12 for their lunch?
We're not talking about the senior lunch, we're talking about this place, so I want to stay on this one, so I don't get, because I get confused real easy. So if we think we're just going up 3%, none of these rates that are proposed are anywhere near 3%. They're like 20.
I didn't say that we were going up 3%. I was using that as an illustration, that if the, would be a way we could have done it. He could have come in and said, okay, my expenses went up X amount. 3%? I'm going to do the 3%. There, my feeling is there should be some methodology.
Right.
On how we're doing this. And, and so that's, I wasn't going to make any comments, I felt that what was here, I could live with, I think it's well within range. But when you start going to that, then I start saying, there needs to be a methodology.
We could, we could charge $10,000 a kid to go to Parks and Rec camp, and we could charge $50 for senior meals, and we can charge, you know, $150 a day for the kids to ski. But we want to provide services for the community, and the taxpayers do understand that their that their tax dollars go to fund things to benefit all different parts of the community, whether it be tennis players, pickleball players, the seniors, the children.
John?
So Beau, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Could you describe a hill rental for us?
What type of rental? A hill rental?
Yeah.
So we have a private rental, which we rent out to Brewster, the Abenaki Outing Club. They rent the hill on Mondays, and, well, okay, so Brewster rents the hill on Monday evenings for an hour. They come with their Alpine team, and then the Abenaki Outing Club, they have their downhill team, they have their cross-country team, and they have their freestyle team. So on Mondays, the freestyle team and the downhill team, or excuse me, the freestyle team uses the hill on Monday after Brewster. And then on Tuesdays, the ski team is renting the hill, because we're only open Wednesday through Sunday. So those private rentals are typically off-hours when we're not open to the public.
So how does that match up with the hockey rink by the hour?
I would say they're getting a pretty good deal, but the thing is, with the Abenaki Outing Club, what they do for the community, what they do for Abenaki, I think is, I have to look at it in a way that, I have to bend a little for them and work with them. Could we charge them 200, $300 an hour? Sure, definitely, but I don't think that's what we should do.
So, do we shut the whole hill down, or just a proportion for them?
Well, when we're not open to the public, they have the whole hill for themselves. It's a skeleton crew. We only need ski patrol, or one person at the top of the motor house running the motor, and then somebody at the base of the hill. They also practice Thursdays during public hours, and then on Saturday mornings, they are renting the hill from typically 7:30 till we open to the public at 11:00.
So what do you think the costs are to operate that? Like Paul says, what's the, what's the return? Do we break even, or do we lose money, or what's the story?
I don't have that answer for you.
I'm going to interrupt here.
One more question. One more question. So the lodge?
Yes.
Like, special events or weddings, are we, are we into that discussion also at any time?
Yeah. In front of you, you have the use policy and the rental form for the lodge. We have seen an uptick in rentals at the lodge. We get a lot of people who want to use it for birthday parties, wedding showers. We had a wedding last year, public meetings, nonprofit meetings, all sorts of different It's definitely, like I said, has seen an uptick in probably the last year, people using the building. I don't know if that's because more people realize that they can rent it for different occasions. The newcomers club have rented it multiple times for socials and gatherings, but what we're finding is, a lot of these events are being held after hours, and we had no fee for that. So we were really kind of spending money as the town to have that building open and being used, because after hours, we have to bring in a staff member and have somebody open and close the building for them. So we did add, that additional staffing fee does apply when events occur outside of business hours.
What we need to realize is that was brought up, this is not an enterprise fund. Until we set it up as an enterprise fund, to me, all Beau's doing is telling us what he's going to charge in the next year. That's all we need to worry about tonight. Because it's not an enterprise fund, as opposed to the hockey rink. That's different. So I think that we need to either, either say, "We're going to make it an enterprise fund, and then we're going to have a real mess on our hands," in my opinion.
I agree.
I think part of our intent was to come to you before it's like, "We don't have money. We're shutting down Abenaki. There's not enough money." So instead of saying, "Now we need to increase the rate by $30 per person," we're saying, "Let's do an incremental increase to try to help close that gap." And it's not a huge impact to the families. They would appreciate that versus now it's $800 for a season pass.
Yeah.
So that's, I think that's what our intent was. Also, to put it on the map, so you could see what our rates have been, what it's roughly costing us to do, because I don't think we've ever done that, and I think we're trying to be more transparent for people, because that's what they're asking for, and that's why we brought this for you today. Ultimately, you make that decision, but we're just doing our job, giving you the information so you can make that decision.
Thank you for doing your job.
Linda?
I get to...
You get next.
Yeah. I thought it was done well. I liked it. You know, I thought about it. I thought about what my grandkids would have to pay, and was this within a range that they could handle? I do have one question, and that is, additional staffing fee applied when the event occurs outside the normal business hours, and I don't have an amount. So if we're going to do that, are we charging, you know, X amount per...
Okay, so we will get that to you. We were just trying to figure out how much it would be for that staff member. We will get you that.
That's the only thing I really would change in this. I think, I think you did a good job. I think what we have here is something that we should approve. A discussion about whether we put it in an enterprise fund, whether we provide services is at another time. I think this, I, thank you.
So I just had one question about the hourly rate for the lodge. You got it at $100 an hour for weddings and so forth. Do we...
This has been the standard, we didn't change those rates. That's the standard rate, I think it was for the community center before too, and almost the great hall, where there's some, some similarities were there. So we didn't touch that unless it went over two hours, because what we were finding is, perfect example is someone booked a wedding, and they went over their time, and we couldn't really kick them out and stop the wedding, so our staff member ended up staying later and had to get overtime. So that's why we wanted to put that in there, so we were clear with them that if you did it for a set amount, if you would be charged extra fees.
So will you be doing some comps for that with other event places, or to get that rate up to a different rate, or no?
My feeling would be no. Brian?
Yeah, we did not increase those rates. Those were the rates that they were. We just, we just added the clause of if it was, because what we were finding is, if they were using it for $50 per use, if they're booking it for 10 hours, that, that's really, they booked it the whole time. So we were trying to limit that, because we looked at other rec departments and what they were doing, and then we said they would incur another charge. And then, same thing for the non-resident, and then the $50 custodial fee, and then we will get you the staffing fee if it's after hours. Also, I think this facility isn't rentable during the ski season, just because it's set up for skiing, and it's really hard, because all the merchandise is behind the gate, but when we open it, everyone has access.
Brian? Quick one. When was the last time we raised rates?
I'd have to look back, but it's been quite a few years.
Okay, so that's all I wanted to...
Yeah, I could get you that information.
So the public knows that this is not something that we do all the time?
Right.
We are just catching up.
I think our task was, at the beginning of the year, we were supposed to look at rates, and so we were trying to continue that, and that's why we brought this forward today. This was the one piece that we didn't have, had finished from the Parks and Rec rates.
Mr. Chairman, just to save my honor, may I have a word?
As long as you don't keep going on this differential stuff that you have in your head.
I have in my head.
Yeah.
There's not much in there, but that differential stuff's, so I did not begin the argument, the conversation by saying this should be an enterprise fund. I think that would be patently dumb. It's not a good idea. So I'm not suggesting when we have a financial difficulty, we reorganize. That's not a smart thing to do. I, you know, I just quickly went through this. I mean, so youth, youth rates go up 50%, adult rates go up 33%, senior rates go up 50%. So that's a big lift. So, and if you think that's the right thing to do, great. What I was trying to figure out is, how much revenue do you bring in? How much cost do you have? And what are you going to do to try to close the difference? And you'll notice that I got, you know, some thought leadership from my colleague, and I respect that, because, because I sometimes don't get that. I'm not going to vote for this. I can't make sense of it.
Okay.
All right? And it's not being disrespectful to you. I know you put in a lot of hard work, but this doesn't make any sense to me. And, so I won't be supporting it. I'd like to, and that's all I'll say about it. Thank you.
I will want to mention, we do have two groups that really help with Abenaki as well. That would be the Friends of Abenaki, who's been instrumental in helping us. Actually, I will say three groups. The cross-country group also has, you know, brought the snowmaking to the cross-country loop, which has brought more people to the area. And then we have the ski club, that is their Abenaki Ski Club, who really helps support the, this program as well. Is there work that needs to be done? Absolutely. We were just trying to show you what's going on. There's definitely more work we can do. I know you're a businessman, so if you want to come over to our office and have a meeting with us, we'd love to do that with you.
And damn proud of that.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody want to deal with us? Table it? What do you want to do?
Yeah, table it.
Well, if we're going to table it, if we want to go down and have some percentage coming down through, if that's the issue here, I guess I look at it, you know, as if a family was paying, or 250, and they had to pay 275, that's for multiple days, that's 25, it didn't seem like a big lift. That was really what I was looking.
Yeah.
But if we want to do it, if what we're tabling it is so we can come up with some kind of formula that will put through all of them, then that's something. If not, I want to vote on it.
I'm not, I'm not interested in working the numbers for the skiing or any, I'm more interested in looking at the price for the lodge for weddings and other big events. That's where I am.
So you're saying if you do this, and you do one of them, you're fine. Okay, I'll make a motion that we, I approve the proposed rates for Abenaki only for the seniors.
And I'll second it for discussion, because I'd like to make a slight amendment to that, only saying that Beau and Christine can come back to us with amendments as if they find further information doing research on other facilities.
Okay. I'll second Linda's motion.
He didn't second my motion.
Oh, he did.
And then, but then he wanted to do an amendment. I'd like to vote on the motion that's on the table.
I would go along with you.
Joe, do you, is Brian's...
And the reason for it is, I think if we start doing percentages, we're going to end up with numbers that are very odd.
Right.
Very odd.
That's what we're trying to limit, because we're also dealing with cash and credit, and it's hard sometimes when kids show up and they don't have the 33 cents extra.
Exactly. And I think that the quote "$5 jumps" make more sense to me, and that's why I would vote for that.
And at any time, if you think you've made these rates too high, feel free to come back to us.
Okay. That was the only reason I put the amendment in.
We have a motion to approve the proposed rates for Abenaki.
That Linda's with the...
I've taken just for this.
Just Linda's.
Just for Linda's.
Not doing the lodge.
Without Brian's amendment?
Correct.
Without Brian's amendment.
Okay.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. So you know what we got to do next?
So, yeah, I just want to be clear. You are looking for us to come back with more information regarding the actual dollar rate for usage of the lodge, correct?
And cleaning fees and that type of stuff, trash, all that stuff.
Okay.
So when a big party comes in there, and they want to have a wedding with 50 or 100 people, they're comparing it to another place that they're going to rent.
I would say weddings are minimal, just because of the alcohol policy. It's more celebration of life, stuff like that. So it's not, that was one wedding that went over, but not all of them are like that. It is a small place too, so you're not getting huge numbers of people, but we'll definitely get those numbers so you can see that.
So there is no alcohol policy on the...
There, they have to come to the town. There is an alcohol policy, but I think it's very limited.
It's beer, it's beer and wine.
Right.
And have mixed drinks.
Right. So I think that does deter a lot of people.
Beer and wine is okay. If they get a permit, they can have beer and wine.
It's BYOB. They have to serve themselves, and they have to have a court and off area outside, don't they?
No, no. We have a whole policy on it. If they get a person who has a liquor license, that person can serve people. So that's something very different.
Next on our agenda, Central Dispatch report.
So several months ago, I believe it was during budget season, Chief Warren was asked by the board to evaluate Central Dispatch and come back to the Board of Selectmen and give a report as to Central Dispatch, what it does, its function, and what other options may be available, if any. Chief Warren completed the report. Chief Warren had to take a little sabbatical, and he's back with us now, and we've got this back on the agenda for you to listen to what he has to say. And I do think that there's going to be a lot of consideration to this discussion, which is coming in front of us from the chief, specific to the amount that we pay the county. Chief?
Wow, it's a lot. Good evening, lady and gentlemen. First of all, let me apologize for my dress-down look. I'm on annual leave this week. And my sabbatical, if you remember, if anybody needs to know all about surgery for a rotator cuff, I'll be happy to tell you all about it. Yeah, as Jim mentioned, in October of 2024, Selectman O'Brien asked me about a bill that he received, or the town received from the county. I think it was $3.3 million, which was the Wolfboro share of county expenses for the budget year. Little bit of digging indicated that part of that $3.3 million was to offset the cost of a certain percentage of communications, the dispatch center being communications at Carroll County Sheriff's Office. I did some research on it, and I can give you those numbers. I can, I can explain it a little bit the best I can. Some of it you know better than I. County taxes are paid, or the county budget is paid by the different towns within the county. And through something called apportionment, each town is assessed its, whatever its value is, to go to 100%. Wolfboro claims the number two spot in the county, and that makes us 15.4610% to pay the bill. So with the total of $21,386,000 and some bills from the county, that made Wolfboro's 15.46%, 3.3 million. It might be noted that the year prior to that, the bill to Wolfboro was 2.6, and I think that's what got Paul's attention initially. As we look closer into this, and I looked at the county budget, it included just over a million dollars for county dispatch, of which Wolfboro does not use. Breaking that down at the 15.46%, that came down to the number of 162,000, which was the number I just heard, which is odd. The town of Wolfboro pays 162,000 and change to the county through this 3.3 million for dispatch service it does not use. Paul's question on that evening in October was, "How do we get our money back?" And to look into that. So that's, that was the first place I went. This is not the first time this has been broached by this community. In 2011 through 2013, there was a group, and I'm sure several of you remember it, it was B.C., so I had to go by the written records. But the outcome was the same as what it was in the beginning. We kept paying the bills that they kept requiring. I think we were at 58,000 that year. The towns of Conway and Moltenborough joined Wolfboro in several meetings with the county commission. Sounded like there was a lot of meetings, but there was no outcome that was in favor of any change. So what I did next was, then I started to... So what I did next was then I started to review, what does everybody else do, and how does this work? It may be noted that the towns of Moltenborough, Conway, and Wolfboro are still the top three in the county as far as their apportionment. Town of Moltenborough has since gone to Carroll County for their dispatch services full-time. They were doing it part-time. Conway remains their own dispatch center and just pays the double fee, as, as does the town of Wolfboro. I have a couple of mandates, I have, I have a couple of things that I, I consider to be my job. And especially after two default budgets, I looked at these, this money real carefully. I strive to be financially and fiscally responsible to the town of Wolfboro without lessening our obligation to the police department's mission for the safety and security of the townspeople and its guests. Bearing that in mind, I started looking at, what are we, what are we getting? What are we paying for? Why are we paying for this? And what does county dispatch do for us? I prepared a report, I submitted it to both the town manager and to Paul, I'm sure you've all seen it by now. And what it does is it looks at, what do we get? I will tell you that, much like the fire service, police departments assist each other on a continual basis, and that includes dispatch. The town of Conway, which is the northern section of the county, town of Wolfboro, which is in the southern section, does work with county dispatch. If anybody goes down or has problems with their dispatch center, depending on what part of the county it is, we are able to assist them. And in fact, in our recent build of the public safety building, we had to shut down power for a few hours, Carroll County took, took our dispatch calls. It was actually quite simple, when you think about it. I also contacted other counties. How do you do it? Well, RSA, I think it's 21J or somewhere abouts, Brian probably knows. The apportionment is the way it's done throughout the state. Each, each county bills town based upon its valuation. So that's consistent. What isn't consistent is the dispatch service. Most counties have their own dispatch center, and some counties do what Carroll does. You pay for your county taxes, we have a dispatch center, come use our dispatch center. Other counties do a fee-based or a usage-based system, where their dispatch bill is set aside from the total county budget, because they know some towns and cities don't use their dispatch center. They, they have that option. Whereas nursing home, sheriff, county attorney, county court, et cetera, you don't have an option, you can't have your own game. So what they do, I think Merrimack, Hillsborough, Grafton, maybe Strafford, I'm still trying to gather information from these folks, they will do it on a, either a usage base only, or a usage plus value plus population, they all have their own different formulas. I did note that in my conversations with some of the sheriffs or the county folks that I did talk to, a frustration. And that frustration was, nothing seems fair or equitable. But they're, they're doing their best to try to make it so for their own towns within each county. Carroll County does not have a, a formula per se. They have a dispatch center, they have full-time communication specialists, and they will dispatch for your community if, if you so desire, if you are within the county. Should be noted, there are other dispatch, county dispatches who actually bill outside the state to dispatch. So they're, they're very varied. There is no continual way of doing things. I was also asked, what do we do, or how much do we do? And I think I addressed those in the report that I submitted to you. We at the Wolfboro Communications, the center, Central Dispatch, provide services to not only the police department, but they also provide service to the fire department, which as you all are very well aware, also is going to be the rescue. Oh, they are rescue, but they will have an ambulance on top of that. There was some anecdotal information about the electric company, the water company, sewer, parks rec, and highway department after hours. All these agencies have their own number to call, but I think that, and this is just supposition on my part, the 1444 number is typically just picked up and called like 911. When's the fireworks? Where can I park? My, my water's out, my electricity went off. And that seems to be what people have gotten used to over the many years that the dispatch center has been there. Other than that, the one that does rely on that service as much as the police department is fire rescue. concern I have is the, as I said, I try to be fiscally responsible, I try to keep the numbers down. As you know, we're still stinging from losing four cruisers in two years of, of trying to get those passed. And I've had to already park one of the cruisers because it wouldn't pass inspection. The other one we had to patch together, thanks to the highway department's capabilities, it, it was able to pass the inspection. So money is very, very important, and I, I get that. And we, we know that from personal experience. So when I'm looking at the amount of money that's spent, I have to look at it from a, an impersonal look, if you will, a, a business sense. Are we getting the best service for the money that we're spending? And, and this is a conversation I think that should continue on with both the town manager at least, and the police commission. Perhaps we can come up with an understanding of, should we be spending this amount of money? I have absolutely no qualms with our communications specialists. They're professional, they do a great job. We get data to the, the building that we live in. So any, any data, any recordings of folks calling in for assistance or, or anything else, it's there. I would never recommend to this board, or the commission, or to the town as a whole to eliminate the entire thing, and just spend the 162,000 and get our dispatch center. Because there's much more services in play here. You know, quickly off the top of my head, I, I'll mention good morning to Wolfboro, where we call the, the older folks, and, and make sure they're good to go. We have a, a welcome face at the window, when we get the mirror off of it, when they come into the new building, and they, they, they have questions or concerns or, or property that they found, or, or that type of thing. But as, as referred to in this report, we run a 724-365 setup, with five full-time and three part-time employees. That's an impact, and that's an impact we need to, to seriously look at as well. I will be bringing my information, this and more, in front of my own commission, and discussing that as well. And I hope that we, you know, keep having this conversation and, and make smart decisions in the future.
So just a couple of quick questions. There's no lag time or any difference if we, if someone calls the county or calls our dispatch in Wolfboro?
Correct.
But our dispatch know the landscape of the town, so they might be able to help someone maybe in a very peculiar situation better, because they know a street address or, or a building location or something? Yes or no?
I would have to suppose that to be true. I know our folks, and our folks have been here a long time. I don't know where the folks live or know about Wolfboro that work at Carroll County Dispatch.
Is there any way that, is it an all or nothing thing? Could we use more Central Dispatch in the slower winter months and use more of our own dispatch in the summer months? Or is it you have to just sign a contract and it's done for?
Central Dispatch is our dispatch.
I mean, the county dispatch.
You talking about like, depending on the season? You can, but you're also, you're, you're running into personnel issues at that point. They're, they're full-time this month, but they're not this month, that, and I don't think that will work, especially in the, in the current job environment.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I think this has been going on for many years, that we have tried in the past to get the county to write us a check for the 162,000 something. So I guess the follow-up question would be, how do we approach getting that money back from the county? Do we have any idea of what, what our, to what extent we have to go to do that?
Well, as I stated, as I began, you, you, you all have been down this road before. There's a couple of things that have changed since 2011. The biggest thing is technology. Technology is constantly changing. We're looking at upgrading our records management program, of which the communications folks are a major player in. Right now, they are for us, I know that the county is as well. It's, 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 it's a system or a base called IMC, it's what runs all our records. As this technology improves, for lack of a better term, it's going to get more and more expensive. You'll see that reflected in our budget, unfortunately. We have to pay the, to keep going. Carroll County's in the same boat. They will be attaching this technology to whatever departments they service as well. That's going to have an impact as well, and it's going to cost money. I think that is part of the conversation that needs to happen between, say, the town of Wolfboro and the county commissioners. Whereas maybe there's a, you know, there's a few different alternatives that other counties have done. One is, you remove the dispatch budget from the total county budget, and you keep it separate, and you bill for, for user, or that type of thing. So if you use it all the time, then you would actually be paying a higher percent. Those numbers were reflected in 2012, I think. Wolfboro's numbers were equal to the town of Albany, which we all know is a much smaller community, because we had our own dispatch center. Another opportunity would be to discuss across the board, again, you're going to have to remove that one million and change out of the total, what is it, 21 million, and try to find an equitable way for all the towns to pay into that. Maybe Wolfboro, along with every other town, pays a flat fee, and then whatever extra they need will be paid by the amount of times you use it, or the number of calls that come in. One thing that is very frustrating, if you start doing your own research and you look, you're going to see something called CFS, Calls For Service. And they all do it. We do it, they do it, my prior agencies did it. We use statistics. Statistics are, well, they're statistics. And we have a number of 43,000 Calls For Service. My question is, what does that mean? What's Call For Service? Because I'll tell you this, and I'll guarantee you this, Call For Service in Wolfboro, and a Call For Service in Conway, and a Call For Service in Concord are three very different things. So don't, don't let that be your guide as to understanding what's happening. You know, I'll be more than happy to help, as will Captain Libby, or even me, Alliance, who's our supervisor, to answer some questions that you have. We also strive to be very transparent and very accountable. They are amongst the best dispatchers I've worked with in 43 years. That said, I think this, this subject needs to continue in conversation. We are paying somewhere around 740,000 for our communications. It's a lot of money, especially when I'm listening from the cheap seats about, where are we getting 100,000? Where are we getting 120,000? And here we have 162 just gone for nothing. Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I will, I was at the meetings when we tried to get this formula changed, and we were talking to the, the chief. Sheriff, there I am.
Chris Conley or Sheriff Cardy?
I think it was Cardy.
That was a swap over right in the middle of that.
It was Cardy at the time.
Yep.
And one of the things that they were not willing to change it, and because they felt that if Wolfboro pulled out and Moltenborough pulled out, the impact on all the other towns were going to be significant, and not feeling as if they would have, be able to man their communications in the manner they wanted. And that was our response. And then it would have, I would have had to been changed by some of the commissioners, and there was no motivation to go in that direction. And that's where we got stopped. So I, I, I think this is something well worth having further discussions about. I think it's something maybe the board needs to at some point, take some time to talk, have a work session and talk with each other about it. We only have one place to do it, is here at a, at a public meeting, and I, that's what I'd like to do, not at 8:30 at the end of a meeting.
I, I would suggest perhaps a work study with the police commission, and I would be certainly happy to assist in that. I did just an added bonus, as you were talking, it dawned on me, one of the other things that was mentioned was that one of the sheriffs of another county stated, they didn't want to do what I was talking about, because it would create competition. And other towns who had their own police communications would offer the services for less than they were offering it, and they didn't want to do that either. So, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts here, so I think it's a longer conversation for, for a time that's earlier in the day.
I agree. Thank you for doing that. It, it makes you eyes open, and I will read it again and do some thinking. It's a good piece of work.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
I think Mr. O'Brien has something. If it's short, that's what that looked like.
Thank you very much for doing this.
You're welcome.
You know, as you were explaining this, I was wondering, would the board have any objection if our town manager, or maybe the two of you folks, you know, put a call up to Conway and said, hey, what's going on up there? Just to get some perspective, would there be any objection to that?
Yeah, yeah, more information we have, the better we.
And the last one, not for discussion tonight, because I'll get a snarl from my beloved chair, is you talked a couple of times about, you know, police dispatching software, and, and in this conversation that we should have or will have with amongst ourselves and the commissioners, I'd like, I'd like to get a, and I mean this respectfully, a scholarly view from people that says, what is dispatch going to look like in five to seven years? Because I got to believe that it's all going up in the cloud, and I got to believe it's going to fundamentally change how we operate. And I, I may be wrong, but I, but I would like to, I would like to make sure that when we have this conversation, because I know that my, my colleague over here, you know, rattled me a couple of weeks ago, and said, well, we should have been talking about this so we would have avoided a police council. Remember that?
Well, that's what, I pulled that out. I mean, but we have. I think the reality is, we've had this conversation, and it keeps on coming up, and we've moved forward keeping it.
But I think it's, my personal opinion, it's different now, because But I think it's, my personal opinion, it's different now, because technology has done some things to us and is doing things to your business that we need to understand. And so I would ask you just to tee that one up when we have this little joint soiree. That was my only, but thank you for doing what you did. This is very appreciated personally on my part.
You're on target about technology. We are in the cloud already. When, in my previous agency, our storage capacity was off-site, but it wasn't on the cloud, and I was buying three and four and five terabyte hard drives almost yearly. Now everything is in the cloud, including the body cams and everything else, so you're right. Is there anything else anybody can ask of me?
I'm sure we'll be in touch with you again.
Thank you.
The only other thing is, at the county commission level, things have changed, and Harold Parker, our new county commissioner, might be somebody that we could reach out to.
I think that's going to happen.
I think that conversation is what we can have, is I think we should have put together a strategy.
Strategically.
Yes, strategically.
Okay, next on our agenda, Public Safety Building update. Okay, so the Public Safety Building capital project has come to a closure. As you may recall, we went in front of the voters, we asked for $13,140,000. To date, we spent $13,161,181, putting us $21,180 over budget. With that said, those items that we are over budget on, we have captured within the existing capital reserve funds for the Public Safety Building. We have three capital reserve funds under the Public Safety Building, one for the parking lot, one for the dispatch console, and one for the building itself. What I would like to be able to do tonight is ask the board to authorize expenditures out of two of the capital reserve funds. The first one would be out of the dispatch console capital reserve fund in the amount of $59,417. And the second one would be in the amount of $24,038 out of the parking lot capital reserve fund. Those funds would be utilized for two items. One, to pay the overage to the engineering architectural firm in the amount of $21,180, and as well to install the Vortex stormwater management system, which was originally part of the Public Safety Building project, which was put on hold until we ensured that we had the funds to be able to do it. When you look at the itemization of the closeout for the capital report, you'll see the $59,417, which was attributed to Two Way Communications for dispatch upfitting in the new building and relocation of equipment. That does, in my opinion, fall within the capital reserve establishment. And the rest of this lays out the capital projects' expenses, both by itemization of individual vendors and by the individual invoices. So you have all of the information in front of you. You also have the site map in front of you, which shows you where the Vortex system is to go. You see, you also have the quote for the Vortex system with an estimate right now of $5,000 for crane services to lift this 52,000 pound item and set it in place. Department of Public Works is going to be working through the process of digging the hole for installation. I think that summarizes the memo and the backup information that you have in front of you. I can try to answer any further questions that you may have. Anybody have any other questions? I think it's pretty straightforward.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to thank Jim for putting this packet together. This has the kind of backup information that I like, and it saved me a lot of time looking up all those articles to make sure they were in line. Thank you very much.
Well, we've finally taken and gotten all of those establishment warrant articles into one singular file on the P drive, so we can go in and pull it anytime that it's needed. So we've streamlined that effort, and I'm glad this meets what you're looking for, and we can get that stormwater system installed this fall, if you authorize the two motions in front of you.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. Jim, does this 13161, which is the estimated final number, that includes the change orders?
That's all change orders.
So about a year ago, there were these change orders coming in, which tends to happen, and this person was a little persnickety about that. But to have a $13 million project land $21,000 over budget, that's not bad at all. And I second Linda's congratulations to you. This is a fine piece of work, because it does summarize and stops at least me and I know Linda and others from having to go dig around on my dining room table for this stuff. The only question I have is about the Vortex system. Was that inside the 13 envelope, or is that outside the 13?
That's outside of the 13 envelope.
So that's $5,000 bucks is outside. It was originally supposed to be a Vortex system, right?
So the Vortex system was originally estimated to be in the project for about $60,000. When it made the decision on the jellyfish and the other supplemental stormwater treatment system items, the Vortex got backed out as well, which I did not realize until literally two months ago, maybe three months ago now. The Vortex system all-in is just shy of $60,000 to get that installed. So all-in, Paul, were about, I think it's $83,000 over budget total on the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize $59,417 of funding from the dispatch equipment capital reserve fund, with the accompanying journal entries for work performed by Two Way Communications, the installation and relocation of dispatch console equipment, which occurred as a part of the Public Safety Building project.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Got one more, because you asked for it, Jim. To authorize, motion to authorize $24,038 of funding from the Public Safety Building Parking Lot Capital Reserve Fund for the installation of the Vortex 7,000 stormwater treatment as designed on the Wolfboro Public Safety Building design.
I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Jim.
Excellent work.
Thank you, and thank you to the voters for approving this project, and I'm glad we were able to get it done timely and on budget. Thank you to the departments who had to live with the construction over the period of two years, and to our contractors who got it done. I know that there are some concerns about the building related to stormwater, but I think all in all, we've landed this, and I think that those are items that we may be able to address in the future. Okay, next on our agenda, authorize Select Board Chair to sign USDA Community Facilities Grant for Library Solar. Yeah, so this is just a formality to authorize the chair to sign this in the warrant article. We did not give the authorization for such, so if we can give the authorization, then it will be in the packet for Dave to sign this evening. Okay, next.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the application.
It's, I think it's a motion to sign the USDA Community Facilities Grant and the Direct Pay IRS Grant. There's two paperworks you have to sign, correct, I believe.
You're good with, that's the motion?
Yes.
I will take mine back and use, I have no problem with that.
Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Okay, old business. Anybody have any old business?
Just an update for the board. I was supposed to work with our beloved Amy on our work plan, clean it up. We did meet, but I don't have it ready to bring back to you folks, so my apologies. It's on the way.
Okay. Anything else?
I have another business.
Well, I'm getting to that. Next on the agenda is any other business.
Okay, so I just wanted to make a clarification. Again, I hope that the board follows proper procedures when we make decisions. I am all for safety. I like the way the crosswalk situation has worked in downtown. We are going to have a second public hearing on it, that's a good thing. What I don't like is when information is given to the public and it's not correct or can be misleading. The DOT has no standards for crosswalks. They don't have any regulations for crosswalks. They're not an enforcement bureau. They do have and do follow the state RSA, which is Chapter 265 Rules of the Road, Section 265, Colon, 69, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited in specific places. The state defines a crosswalk area as any intersection on a state roadway. And any intersection is supposed to have a clear 20 feet crosswalk at that intersection. So when we have our three crosswalks that are mid-block, which are at the Yum Yum Shop, Nolan's, and T-Tops Shirts, those are not required by state RSA to have clear 20 feet on either side of them. It's okay if we do it. We have the right to choose and to do it. In some situations, you actually have to ask for state approval to do it. Ours have been there long enough so that the state is, let's call them grandfathered. But it is misinformation when we tell the public that they have to have crosswalks there. It is a DOT regulation and a state RSA. So I just want that to be clear.
Linda?
Yeah, I would like to place a discussion item on the next agenda to discuss how the Select Board can request the state to mark the Carpenter School area as a school zone, which would lower the speed to 25 from 30. And that was brought up at our public hearing, and I think it was a good one. I would also like the board to review the line of sight for the crosswalks from the Pickering House over to the Congregational Church. And that is a discussion item, and we can do that. I also am requesting that the Select Board at one of the next few meetings review the parking ordinance for trucks, which is another comment that was made. Very good comments from the public, and I think we as a board should follow up with them, and so I would like those on the agenda.
Agreed.
I agree with that completely. I'd like to pile on one more.
Sure, pile another one.
We did get a, and I got it from a couple of people, we did get an ask, hey, what happened to the handicap spot out in front of Madeline's? And we may want to revisit that, because then Kathy mentioned it, and Madeline mentioned it to me, that there was, and you know, I wasn't paying attention clearly, that there was a handicap spot that's gone.
Yeah.
And I think you've kind of nodded on that, said, yeah, I remember that, right?
Yeah, but we had problems with needing ADA. I think it's something that we will need to get information on. It's not an easy, oh, let me write it on there.
Yeah, the question is where we place one.
There's on the hill too, so, but I think, I agree with you.
Yeah, let's deal with it. All right, thank you.
Okay. Town Manager's report. A couple of things, hopefully in the next day or two, you'll be getting a memo from me. If you recall, back in July, there was a question regarding the wastewater treatment plant capital reserve fund and the $48,000 to be expended for tree cutting. We went through, we looked at the creation of the warrant article language. The language is very ambiguous. We did go back and look at the proposal brought forward by Woodard and Curran in September of 2024 for the budget process, and they clearly articulated that those funds would be for tree cutting, mowing, and spray field maintenance. We did, at the deliberative session, show on the slide that we would be doing tree work and tree trimming. We did reach out to legal counsel, because it was unclear. Legal counsel did feel that because of the ambiguity of the language that was created, the fact that it was disclosed by Woodard and Curran as part of their proposal, and that it was articulated at the deliberative session, that it does fall within the Board of Selectment's authority to be able to spend that $48,000 for the tree trimming and mowing. We will be looking for greater detail from Woodard and Curran in the future related to maintenance activities versus capital projects. So you'll be getting a memo from me on that in the next day or two. Department budgets are in. As you may recall, when we put together the budget guidelines, we knew of $1.5 million in increases. The actual budgets as of today, we haven't initiated any reviews yet. We start reviews tomorrow. As of today, the increase on the general fund is 2.5. So we have some work to do. Remember, those items in the 1.5 range, those were items that were known based on debt service, approved funding for capital, not capital, excuse me, collective bargaining agreements, and there were a couple other items. But we're working through that. With that said, in September 26, we are hopeful to have your budget books to you with our first meeting on the budget with the Board of Selectmen October 2. Libby Museum Timber Preservation Specialists will be in late September to work on the North Wall and stabilization. I received confirmation, I believe, yesterday on that. I also had a very quick conversation with the Libby Heritage Subcommittee regarding where they're at and where they're going. I think we'll be probably scheduling a Libby trustee meeting at the next board meeting. I also had a meeting with the Executive Director of Wolfboro Community TV and their treasure. We had a quick conversation about the upcoming budget, and we have a follow-up meeting scheduled, I believe it's next week. Paul, myself, and Dave attended a ground rule meeting for impact negotiations related to ambulance service, and we are continuing to work through Capital Improvement Plan Committee, meeting tomorrow. And I think I met with each Board of Selectmen member over the past two weeks, at least once, if not twice. That's all I have in my report to you. Okay, committee reports. John?
So had the community center meeting with Dave and Linda and Amy and Christine, and attended a planning board meeting last night.
Okay. As Jim had mentioned, we had meetings with the unions for ground rules. We also had meetings with the ambulance service. And we also, as John said, we had a meeting with the community center. Linda?
Yes. The Capital Improvement Plan Committee reviewed the municipal electric department projects for the next 10 years. As always, this enterprise fund has a handle on future needs of the department, including a $1.5 million 2028 project to move the electric poles for the Route 28 project. I attended the ad hoc. I attended the ad hoc community, the ad hoc community center meeting. I attended a couple of ad hoc community TV meetings. I attended the Friends of Popwell and meeting. I attended the Chamber Social at the Downtown Grills, sponsored by Tony Fallon and the Grill, and I learned that the grill will use the first floor for events and the second floor for the restaurant. I attended the Wolfboro Waters meeting. We discussed the flow in Smith River. The public works staff checked the dam three times a week. On Monday, August 25, the Smith River Dam was totally shut down due to the drought conditions. Wolfboro Waters reviewed its 2026 budget and submitted the budget at $24,500, which is the same as last year, but has tasked the assessment subcommittee to review and update its budget request. That's the subcommittee that spends most of the money. If there is a need to change, the Wolfboro Waters Committee will make that change when the Board of Selectmen reviews the budget. The committee reviewed the septic system rules, and a few minor changes were made, so it will go back to the committee meeting on September 22. The two subcommittees of Wolfboro Waters will meet, one on the drainage at the public safety building, and the other one on the library drainage project, and meet with the library drainage project to look at some of the questions and concerns from the committee. I think those, both of those committees should meet prior to the next Wolfboro Waters Committee meeting, and Wolfboro Waters has invited the town planner to attend the September 22 meeting to introduce him to Wolfboro Waters.
Paul?
I attended that union session with Dave, Jim, and our council. It was good. It was good. It was a good conversation. It wasn't tense, which is a nice way to try to get things done. Mr. Thurston and myself have been asked by the planner to be his, I don't know what the right word is, but to be his sounding person, board, whatever. John and I sit on the planning board. John is alternate, and I sit on it, so Mr. Scott has asked us to, you know, when it comes time to clarifying things, asking questions, we're not going to make policy with him, but we're going to try to do the best we can. I think John and I have had some experience with the planning board. I did attend the planning board meeting last night. We had, I think it was five, public hearings for disposition, two had to do with building on wet areas, and very candidly, that was a professional, but it was a clear conversation that I thought was very helpful. Some people may have found it a little intrusive, but if you're going to build on wet areas, there's some rules you got to follow, and sometimes we're accused of not following them, and we reminded the applicant that they have to follow some rules. They're not egregious, they're not onerous, but you know what? We all play by the same game, and that's the way it should be. So, I thought that was good. I thought our town planner was exemplary, so those are the three things I've been involved with.
Brian?
I had a, only one meeting, a milfoil committee meeting. We went through the budget, and we went through the next milfoil treatment that will be happening in the spring. I wanted to add something on to Linda's request. We need to look at the town hall parking lot. It's under our E code 164, colon, five restricted parking areas, and it says, parking directly in front of the town hall shall be limited to 30 minutes during the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on business days, with the exception of one space reserved for the town clerk. Well, everybody knows our town clerk's space is in the back. In the rear parking lot, except for the parking spaces reserved for town employees, there's only one, it's for the code officer, parking shall be limited to two hours between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. So, I'm not sure that that's the way, except Island residents' vehicles, Island stickers shall have unrestricted use of that parking lot at all times. So, I think we need to look at that one. That should go on our list pretty soon, especially because Mr. Thurston has been asking about it. Also, right underneath that is Union Street, parallel parking, south side from School Street to Learner Street is a restricted parking area. We may have some parking spots down there that are being used. I don't know. That's one I'm going to have to double-check.
Any questions from the press, Jim?
She is not on.
Public input, limit three minutes per person, not to exceed 15 minutes in total. Does anybody wants to talk to us now?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jordy Hutchinson, and I'm here to talk about the community center. I would ask, and I'm going to try to get this on the agenda for the next meeting, but I would ask that the board postpone closing the community center to give an opportunity to, look at opportunity to restore it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you were asking.
I'm going to come, I would like the board to consider postponing, closing the community center to allow an opportunity to come up with a plan to save it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Oh.
About...
You got that?
Oh, yes, hold it. Yeah, this gentleman wants to postpone the closing and look into renovating it or saving it, but it's my understanding that the town, this has been kicked down the road for 10, 20 years. I mean, Amy's got a book like this that she showed me of everything, and I think it's time to deal with it and move forward with a building that is deserving of Wolfboro and all the other places where we spend money.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, somebody want to make a motion to go into non-public?
I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, yes, yes.
We're in non-public. Thank you very much.